Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for coming. Great to see a full house. This is an operations meeting for the Guilford Board of Education. The purpose of the hearing, the public input meeting tonight, is to hear from you all. It's an input-only meeting, so we're going to hear from you. There will not be any feedback from us. This is merely for us to hear your input so that we can go back and craft the budget. The ideas and considerations will help shape the upcoming budget. With this in mind, there will be no discussions. I want to give a brief timeline of what we're looking at for the budget because this is a long process and this is the very start tonight. So after tonight, we will have a meeting with our district leadership team. We will go over kind of their requests, what they want to see in the budget, what the administration wants to see in the budget. Following that, on January 3rd, the preliminary budget and proposed bonding will be submitted to the Board of Ed, to us here. From there, we will have a discussion at our regular meeting in which we present it to the rest of the public, to all of you. And that will be the result of this meeting tonight, plus any input that we hear from you in the next few months. On the 17th of January, we'll have our first joint meeting with the Board of Finance to discuss the budget. And then, most importantly, on January 23rd and 24th, those are our public hearing nights. So that is when everyone will have the actual budget in front of them, and you'll be able to provide feedback. So if something does not get in the budget that we're discussing here tonight, and you want to come and discuss it after the fact, we could discuss it on the 23rd and 24th of January. And then lastly, in April, the town will have an opportunity to vote on our budget through referendum. So tonight, the floor is yours. If you could please clearly state your name and address as you approach the podium. We do know that some groups will come up as the groups speak. If each individual speaker could give their name and address. We ask that we limit comment to four minutes each. So if you could please respect everyone's time. We have a lot of people here. We'd like to be able to go through and hear everybody. So with that, the floor is open. Whoever wants to approach the podium first, please feel free and approach our podium.
Mr. Delventer, one extra ask. There is a pad at the podium. If we can get names and addresses written down for spelling.
Great. So not only speak your name and address, but please write your name and address. Do we have a pen at the podium as well?
I think there's a pen over there. Yes, there is. Okay. Thank you.
And I'll keep time for everybody, so I'll give you guys a hand raise if you're getting to about 30 seconds left. And then at four minutes, I'm going to ask you to stop speaking so we have time to hear from everybody.
Wonderful. Hi, there.
Hi. Sorry. Hello, my name is Alicia Valentino, and I'm here to request that more funding be allocated to services not currently covered for vision therapy, sensory integration, and the OT and PT that is needed for such vision impairments in children that significantly affect their learning. Unbenoits to many of you, there are other children, like my son Max... Sorry. It's okay. Okay. Got this. ...who have been suffering with various vision impairments that are not properly tested for or diagnosed. I would hope you share in my frustration that in our state and here within our public school system, these impairments and necessary services are not recognized or covered as they are in other states like California. I am hopeful that with additional funding, more can be allocated to help other parents like me not feel as though we are isolated on the quest to help our child access their education, be a confident learner, and have success not just in school but in their personal lives. Just as there is funding for necessary services for speech and dyslexia, I speak for other parents when we ask that the same be granted for our children who have other vision impairments. This request for funding would include expanded testing, training, education, and resources for those who administer special education plans, as well as the regular educators. It would include materials to implement such therapy recommendations, such as slantboards, visual aids, vision exercise tools to be used by OT technology and more. To give you a brief background on why this is important, our family has lived in Guilford since 2013, and we love being part of this community. We have two boys, eight and almost 11. Our oldest son Max was born with torticollis and various developmental health and vision issues that stemmed from it, which we did not learn about until a year and a half ago. We were fortunate to have an appointment with a local eye doctor here that took the time to consider his developmental history, years of struggles that he's had both in and out of the school setting. After a thorough screening, we then learned that Max had the following vision impairments: ocular motor dysfunction, convergence insufficiency, suppression binocular vision, accommodation dysfunction, and constricted field. He was basically seeing the periphery of only the size of a quarter. Using only one eye at a time, both of which causes his nervous system to be in constant motion in fight-or-flight mode. To say we were disheartened was an understatement, however, at least some relief that we now knew the root cause of his learning issues and anxiety. We were referred to vision therapy for Max, which we were incredibly lucky to meet Dr. Chelsea Wang, who is another parent and member of our community here in Guilford. It's been a journey to determine the correct diagnosis for Max and find the right support and treatment. However, we were very concerned at the high cost of these therapies and services would be solely on us to bear. Due to our state guidelines, his acuity was just under the range that the state would cover. So our school therefore could not deem his impairment as one that significantly affects his educational performance, even though it truly was. Max has been receiving vision therapy for the past year and a half, and it has helped his peripheral vision improve dramatically, his tracking and reading accelerate. With his combination of PT and OT to integrate his vision with his body, he has new stamina and confidence in sports. He's excited to play basketball for the first time this year. I see many of the teams here. You guys could appreciate that. Max did not qualify for direct vision services, but our education team here in our town, and Jason's not here, I would thank him publicly, worked with us to use some of his OT allotment to do some of these exercises. We remain grateful that we know the allotment of services can help others. Max did not qualify for the state resources, but we did meet with an organization called NEET who provided assistive technology, a slantboard that was deemed necessary for his learning. Max responded very well to the therapy. I will continue to advocate for vision therapy as critical therapy for those with impairments like my son, and until we can have it officially considered and covered by our state and our district, that all of you consider increasing the funding for the related services that have helped my son and could help so many others. And this is just where his vision is now, his periphery. And this is where it started, which was the size of a quarter. So it's definitely not just evidence-based. This is the evidence here, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If I'm the...
Yeah, please.
For people standing, we do have some chairs along here. I want to welcome you if you want to sit at one of these side tables and not stand. Up to you, but...
You could also move chairs in if you want to as well. Hi there.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Christine Doco. I live at 23 Mill Road. I am here on behalf of the Guilford High School Music Boosters, a group of over 100 GHS families that supports the high school music program. I'm happy to report that the music program is continuing to recover from the negative impact of the pandemic. Thank you for the budgetary support that has allowed this to happen. This year, around 275 students are participating in ensembles, and around 85 are in other music classes, including a new, fully-enrolled digital audio production class funded by a grant from the Guilford Fund for Education. For these many students, the music program is an important source of community, mentorship, and well-being. It's also a source of pride for the whole town with a packed schedule of concerts at GHS and in the community, including the iconic Tree Lighting Concerts and the Meals on Wheels fundraiser. When crafting next year's budget, we ask that you keep in mind that the effects of the pandemic are still with us, the students most impacted being at Adams now. These students still need resources to make up for the lack of teacher contact during that time. Happily, the number of music students at Baldwin is at pre-COVID level, so it looks like the program is on track to fully recover with continued support. Thank you for your attention and for your service.
Thank you.
My name is Will Ordoliva. I live at 55 Dennison Drive. I'm here as an elementary school teacher to advocate that all classroom sizes in the elementary schools can be somewhat equal regardless of what school it is in the district. Just a little background knowledge about myself. My son Quinn is in 3rd grade at Cox, and I also have a son Sullivan, Sully, who's five, at Cox in kindergarten. I've been an elementary school teacher for 17 years. I did 14 years as a 4th grade teacher in Hamden, and now I'm currently a 5th grade teacher in West Haven, just doing math and science. In addition to that, my mother taught 35 years in New Haven as a kindergarten teacher. My father taught 35 years at West Haven High as an English teacher. My sister is a 21-year teacher at Amity High School. As an art teacher, my brother-in-law is also a science teacher with his PhD at Amity. And my wife Tori teaches 2nd grade in Westbrook, and there's me as well. So I come from a family of blood of teachers, so what I do is very passionate. I was raised in a household of teachers. It's what I love to do, which is why I'm here. I've been surrounded with teachers my whole life, and when I know that something needs to be changed, I usually kind of sit back a little bit, but when my heart's really into it, that's when I step forward. So, long story short, in my 17 years of teaching, I've seen massive growth in my students from tier-three kids, tier-two kids, tier-one kids, special ed kids, tag kids, when classroom sizes are at a legitimate amount. I've had years where I've had 26 students in my class. I've had years where I've had 16 students in my class. Regardless, my students make gains. My students make growth in math and reading and social studies and science. I've had kids on a 2nd grade reading level. By the end of the year, they're on a 3rd grading level, reading level. Doesn't seem major, but that's huge growth. During our SRBI intervention blocks, during reading groups, during writer's workshop, during math workshop, when you're pulling your small groups for explicit instruction, it's doable to have the kids make gains with a class of 22, with a class of 23, of course. Is there enough... Are there enough resources to have all of those kids make enough gains? Probably not. When class sizes, as you know, are a little bit smaller than the average, 19 or under, bigger growth happens. I know this because I've seen it. Some of my best classes, the best well-behaved classes, were those 26 kids. Some of my least well-behaved classes were the 16. It's the group you have in front of you. But regardless, across the district, it needs to be somewhat the same. When a school has 15 or 16 in a kindergarten in comparison to a kindergarten that has 20, four kids doesn't sound like a lot, but for one teacher, maybe a para, maybe an aide, it is a lot. The kids could be well-behaved, but they're probably not getting the needs that they need. I know this because I've seen it. I've lived it. My parents have, my sister, my brother-in-law, my wife. I've, you know, I'm teaching right now in West Haven. I have 21 kids in my class with eight tier-three kids, most of the packed tier-two and a couple tier-one, and I'm trying my best to get those pocketed kids who you can move, but there's not enough time in the day with one person with 20 kids in front of you to have them make as much growth as they can. It's not possible. They're going to make growth. Every kid will make growth, but they're not making the growth that they can without class sizes being equitable across the district. Would I love to have 16 kids in front of me? Of course. Would I love to have 16 kids in my sons', in both of my sons' classes? That'd be great. That's not what I'm asking. I'm just asking that it be somewhat equitable, to look at the numbers and try to figure out some type of way where if one school has 19 kids in a class, then another school should have 19 kids in a class, whether it's hiring another teacher, whether it's shifting teachers around. I've been shifted by grades, grade to grade. It happens. Teachers are resilient. They could do it. But what's most important is the kids in front of you, so I hope you take that into consideration.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi. Alicia Rayner, 29 South Fair Street. So the last time I spoke to the board was in January, requesting to add varsity cheerleading back to the high school budget. I'm here today with a high school cheerleading team to request that of you again as you prepare the budget for next year. When I spoke then, we had just over 30 kids in the program in a cheerleading sense from 1st grade through 8th grade. Now we have over, or almost, 70, 1st grade through 12th grade. We are 15 girls strong for football season[918.56][918.56](applause) with a couple of additions probably coming to us that had other sports that they're playing during the fall. So, really excited. That's all I have to say. I'm going to let them speak about the program and talk about, you know, why they joined. It's a really great group of girls. They come from a variety of different groups with a lot of different backgrounds, so I'll let them do the talking.
Should I say my name too? I'm Madison Harrington, and I live on 20 Woods End Road. When I came here, I came with my coach Alicia when we spoke back in January, and along with her, I wanted to start a cheer team. And it was hard, I'm not going to lie. It was hard to try to find the right group of people that would be passionate about the sport, but we pulled it together, and all of these people, I loved them so much, and we started our football game season, and that went really well. We did halftime. We got, we fundraised for our own uniforms. We ordered our uniforms. We had palms and all of that, and we're competing. Are we competing? We're competing this coming season in January, I believe. And I come from a background of All-Star cheerleading, which is competitive cheerleading outside of the school. So that's all I have to say. That's my background.
My name is Morgan Ross, and I live on 50 Jameson Drive. When I first started cheerleading, I didn't think that I would like it because I didn't know anyone, but my friends ended up doing it with me, so it was really fun. And I feel like now I have something to look forward to after school instead of just sitting around doing homework. And all of these girls are really nice, and I got along with them no matter how much I knew, like, none of them. But yeah, it's just really fun to hang out with them and do something that I actually like now, so, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ava Klopatek, and I live on 22 Dover Court. I joined cheer because, first of all, I learned that all my friends are doing it, and also I think it's a great way just to show school spirit and really just connect as a group. And I think that we've become a group of friends, and we all can go to each other to support each other when we need it, and I just think it's a good sport in our school for the community.
My name is Caitlin Fagan, and I live at 28 White Birch Drive. I come from, well, about four years ago, I came from Alabama, where cheerleading is a very big and influential part of the high school. There's about, there's a lot of kids on that team, and it's been very respected and counted as a sport. They go to camps like NCA in the summer, which is something we can't do as we aren't counted as a varsity sport. And that has led them to become very good and been able to go to very big competitions in Florida and things like that. And I think being counted as a varsity sport here could help us get to that level. I also do All-Star cheerleading, like Maddie, and I used to be a gymnast, so, yeah.
Hi, everyone. My name's Elizabeth Reel, and I live at 52 Leighton Trail. The thing about cheerleading too that I think is really great is we're not just going out there to represent ourselves. We're also there as like a pillar of support and positivity for the teams playing, and I think it's really important that we are able to go out there and do stuff and improve. And I feel like that extra help from you guys would be really beneficial and important as we're there not just for ourselves, but to also support the teams, so.
I want to clarify, any students, we don't need your address, just your name.
Hello, my name's Sophia LaBelle, and I'm kind of just here to say, as a junior at GHS, there's been multiple years where people leave during pep rallies because there's not enough, like, school spirit. No one does the spirit days, and it's kind of disappointing compared to other schools and the teams that have, like, better spirit. And as we've, we're not only friends, we're like a family here, and we have that support system. We see each other in school throughout the day. We have people to talk to about what we're going through, and it's a lot more than that. And with funding, we're able to make this even bigger and add more people to make it more successful.
I am a senior football parent and co-president of the Guilford Touchdown Club, which is our booster club for the football program. Last February, as some of you may remember, we were thrilled to find out that an additional assistant football coach salary had been included in the proposed budget. I know there was much discussion by the board regarding the financial needs of the various high school sports teams, and football was grateful to have been part of that conversation. As the board knows, however, that position was eliminated in April and was not included in the final 2023-24 budget. Our booster club works very hard throughout the year to raise money so that we can support the team and our coaches, and that fundraising begins with the coaching stipend in mind. On behalf of the football program, I would ask that the board include at least one assistant coaching salary in the upcoming budget. And we have some players here to speak on that as well.
My name is Buddy Gambardella of 254 Tanner Marsh Road.
I'm Tyler Hilgert. I'm 32 Maffrey Drive.
Jake Janich.
Our team is having a successful season on the field with a 4-1 record, and we are on track to make the state playoffs for the first time since 1993. Our football team is building a winning tradition at Guilford High School. We believe for our program to take the next step, we need to have proper equipment and to be able to pay as many of our coaching staff as possible from the GHS athletics budget. A proposed assistant coaching salary was cut from this past budget. Football was the only athletic coaching position to be eliminated. Also, we did not have enough helmets for every player on the team and had to borrow from the youth program this past year. Player safety should be the number one priority in football. Our team and the GHS Touchdown Club have worked hard to raise funds and assists. Even with these efforts, it is difficult to fund the growing football program. We are asking that the coaching stipend that was removed be restored in this upcoming budget. Players and coaches have worked hard to change the tradition of our program, and we feel having the funds to retain coaches and provide proper equipment is vital for future success. Thank you.
I live at 1 Highland Street. I wish I could have the cheerleading squad behind me. I'd probably feel better, but... I'm the mother of twins who are in 4th grade at AW Cox. As a taxpayer and most importantly, as a parent, I'm here to ask the Board of Education to create a line item in the budget that supports the implementation of the SRBI process. This would include systems to collect and analyze data, teacher training, certified staff to provide intervention and oversight, and the administration of both math and reading universal screeners. My input tonight is not only based on personal experience, but also as an informed educator. It is my experience that Guilford Public Schools is lacking adherence to the SRBI process and therefore failing legal obligations to child find. To provide some context, the Guilford Public Schools SRBI manual was updated in the fall of 2021. The forward explains that the Guilford Public School System provides tiered intervention to students who may be performing below grade-level expectations using a variety of evidence-based strategies and interventions that are aligned with Connecticut State Guidelines and also provides the link with Connecticut's RTI framework. Let's start with figuring out if students are below grade-level expectations and identifying students who need intervention. In Guilford's SRBI manual, on page 12, it describes the process of moving students through the tiers based on evidence. The first text box underneath "Problem Identification" is "Universal Screener." In Connecticut's framework for RTI, on page 13, it also lists universal common assessments as a key element of SRBI, and elaborates on page 19 that universal common assessments are "measures that are the same for all students within a grade in a school or district and that are administered to all of those students on a routine basis," for example, "fall, winter, spring." In Guilford's SRBI manual, it lists the screening measure for K3 as the EZCBM. When I asked for this data, I was told universal screeners were never administered to my children in grades K through 3. It is only recently, this past September, that the school started to administer DIBbles as a literacy screener. Additionally, there's still not a math universal screener. I would also like to add that in a meeting, when I asked the team of teachers when my children's phonological awareness, one of the biggest indicators of reading success, was assessed, I was met with an awkward silence, and then one team member responded, "Maybe in kindergarten?" question mark. This indicates to me that assessing phonological awareness is not something that is built into the assessment calendar. In fact, I learned that at least prior to this year, there has never been an assessment calendar. As a literacy specialist and someone who coordinates the SRBI process at the school I work for, I don't understand how decisions can be made without data, especially data provided by universal screeners. In order to identify students who are not proficient in math or reading, and in order to move students through the tiers, the SRBI team needs to analyze data that allows them to see how students compare to the norm, as well as their growth over time. I ask that the Board of Education considers budgeting for the implementation of universal screeners, both for literacy and math, ones such as NWA MAP Growth for grades K through 8. Additionally, it's become very obvious to me that both teachers and leadership are very unclear about what qualifies a student for intervention. On page 14 of Connecticut's Framework for RTI, it describes one of the underlying principles and critical features of SRBI is "data-driven decision-making and decision rules" in bold. When I asked a team of teachers what would qualify my child for intervention, I was met with another long awkward silence, and then the principal responded, "We see how they do in the classroom." This is very concerning to me, that decisions are not based on data, rules or guidelines and rather, rules that were guidelines, and rather based on who my child is sitting next to and the assessment a teacher created. There needs to be systems and oversight to ensure all students are considered for intervention and decisions are made based on data. In addition, certified personnel are also a necessity. In my child's school, there's one certified reading specialist, zero math specialist, and zero parent educators. Therefore, the model for providing intervention is either put on the classroom teacher, who most likely isn't certified, or provided to only the neediest, or to those whose parents are forced to make a referral for special education, which can result in the over-identification of students who need IEPs. I ask you to consider my thoughts.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Addison Smith, and I'm a captain of the Guilford Rowing Team. I'm here today with another captain of the Guilford Rowing Team, George Van Alosa, and Jen Cohen, who is a member of the Friends of Guilford Rowing Board. I joined the Guilford Rowing Team when I was a freshman, and even though I had zero experience rowing, I felt welcomed and valued to the team. The camaraderie that's built through being on a boat together for hours in the middle of a lake with freezing rain in the middle of April is like nothing I've ever experienced before. I have so much pride to represent I've ever experienced before. I have so much pride to represent GHS in such a unique sport, one that only 5% of public schools in our state have. And I know that my passion for crew is shared among each and every one of my teammates. Although spring is our main competitive season, the vast majority of my teammates make it a year-round commitment. But unfortunately, the current funding for this incredible sport doesn't even begin to cover the costs that we have to pay. As a result, the spring participation fees are $450 per athlete. This is prohibitively high and detrimental to the accessibility of our team. To increase the inclusivity of this transformative sport, we're making a formal request, as described in the flyer that we passed out, for $7,000 in 2024, which would drop fees from an astounding $450 to as low as $350. And then another $14,000 in 2025, which would lower fees to another $225. And then $21,000 in 2026, and every year after that, which would make the student participation fees as low as just $125. I know that this is not a small ask, but it's critical to making our sport available to everyone. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Hi there. My name is Elizabeth Galvin. My address is 20 Landen's Way. I have a third grader at Cox and a kindergartner at Cox. I actually grew up in Guilford as well, and we moved back to town about a year ago because of the great school system. I was also a varsity cheerleader, so I can support that too, but that's not why I'm here tonight. During a recent Board of Ed meeting, Dr. Freeman spoke of his commitment to ensuring students are provided with smaller class sizes for optimal learning. I do not believe this is happening at Cox in the current kindergarten class, and I want to ensure that you include in next year's budget a teacher for the rising first grade class. In his response to an email I sent on August 18th, Dr. Freeman let me know on August 21st, the desired number of students by the board in kindergarten class was less than 20, and at the time, Cox had the largest kindergarten class in the district. As of two weeks ago, my daughter's kindergarten class received its 20th student and have not received additional support outside of a parent part of the day. The size of the class shouldn't have been a surprise. As we went to the kindergarten orientation in June, it was mentioned that there were already 53 kids registered in that class. As of today, there are 57 students registered in the kindergarten class at Cox. Teachers shared during the parent-teacher meeting that we had earlier this year that it takes much longer to get the kids out of their coats and set up in the morning. I can only imagine with winter coming, that hats, gloves, boots, and all that will take even more time out of what matters most: time spent learning, active participation, and engagement between the staff and our children. I asked my five-year-old over dinner what the morning looked like, and she said, it literally takes forever. I think we can all agree that it's not an optimal learning environment or a desired state. For next year, I respectfully ask that you include a fourth first-grade teacher to decrease the class size of this exceptional class of children at Cox.
Good evening. My name is Chris Ward, and I'm here representing the 30-odd families of Guilford Boys and Girls Hockey, many of whom are taking time out of their straight-A academic records to be with us here tonight. I want to begin by asking the boys and girls in attendance to please stand, and what I would say to the Board of Education and Dr. Freeman and the voters of Guilford is that if we were together on the ice right now, we would do what in hockey is known as a stick tap, where that's a way of expressing sportsmanship or thanks or great player teamsmanship. And we would extend that to you, the board, for the journey we started two years ago to get the funding to a more sustainable place for Guilford hockey. So folks, just a round of applause, please, for the Board of Education, Dr. Freeman, and the voters. Thank you. Thank you very much. For those, memories may have faded, or those that are new in the audience, the discussion tonight for Guilford hockey is, we've had a level of funding that began about 20-some-odd years ago that was held constant over many years. Ice costs go up at about 3%, as you're seeing in your graph, and eventually what that does is it drives more funding from the families and the fundraising and all of that, such that several years ago, the amount of funding coming from the town to Guilford High School hockey was 25%. So an ice bill today is about, every time we touch the ice, we're renting ice, of course. Ice bill was about $40,000, $41,000 is kind of where we're at. So that $10,000, you kind of do the quick math, and you understand where we stand. Two years ago, when I appeared at the podium, I think it was a little late in the cycle, but the Board of Education and Dr. Freeman and the voters still found a way to increase that funding to $15,000, which was the last cycle, as we all know. The effect that that had, that $5,000 increase, what it did was it dropped player dues from $1,400 a year down to $1,170, or a $230 delta, which is huge. Now, we may not feel great about $1,170 per family, but it's a journey that we're on. And the journey that was continued for this current budget cycle was the decision of the board, the Board of Finance and the voters, was to go to $25,000 funding, for which we are severely grateful. How that works out in math is yet to be determined, but it allows us to reduce the number of fundraisers that we do. We did 13 in one year, so this is a team of hockey players/salespeople, as we've discussed before, and we believe in fundraising. We're not looking for a free ride. We're going to fundraise. We're going to have dues with our families, but we just wanted to bring things in better balance. So the request appears in the black box at the bottom of your handout is simply this: that we close out the journey here in the new budget, that we go to the full $40,000 funding of ice. That would result in 95% funding for the team. We'll call the balance of that de minimis, and we'll fundraise and cover all of that in addition to our gear and the other things that we do, our senior night and, you know, helmets and sticks and all of that stuff. So that is a simple request, but the underscore here is a massive thank you from the families, of which I am one, for the funding that you provided, and we hope that you'll consider closing out the journey in the next budget cycle and raising it to $40,000. Thank you.
AW Cox. When it became clear that the kindergarten class sizes at AW Cox were going to be a great deal larger than any of the other Guilford kindergarten classes, the opportunity to switch to Calvin Leit was offered. My husband and I agonized about the decision. Probably, I've spoken to some of you on the phone, and you helped us sort of work through that difficult decision, so thank you for that. After talking with our neighbors who have kids at AW Cox and hearing the seemingly endless list of superlatives, we decided to go with our neighborhood school. We know kids do better in smaller class sizes, so it was a really tough decision. When I learned that other schools had added another kindergarten class, it felt, it was disappointing that we, that Cox didn't do the same, because we could have had sort of, you know, the best of both worlds. And so I am glad that we stayed at AW Cox. My son loves kindergarten. He loves to learn. He's having a great experience. But also, kids do better in smaller class sizes. I am asking for parity with the other schools. In Guilford, Lakes added a class, and I understand that the Board of Education has decided that they're landed on the number of 20 being sort of the ideal cap, but when every other kindergarten class has substantially fewer kids, it feels inequitable, because it is inequitable. I'm asking for another class to be added to the first grade at AW Cox for the 2024-2025 school year, so that class sizes across the district are equitable. I am sorry for the run-on sentences and rambling. I had large, large class sizes as a child. All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Adam Cologne, 96 Tulip Tree Drive. I'm here on behalf of another parent booster cub, the Guilford Netminders Organization, which is the boys' lacrosse team here at the high school. First, I just want to say thank you for your dedication and commitment to our community as well as our kids. I've had the opportunity to pretty much for the last two years watch a lot of the YouTube. I'm not able to make it here, but I just want you to know the recording and the YouTube channel is a huge tool for me. So if there's ever questions about that, please continue to do that. Two items I just wanted to bring to your attention for fundraising, for funding consideration. One is similar to other sports, an additional assistant coach for the boys' high school program. It's around a $3,500 cost is what we're looking at. I think from the last budget cycle last year, we talked about staffing ratios and the importance of the kids' development, but really around the safety. And lacrosse being a very fast, physical sport, an additional coach would help provide some of that development and safety that we're focused on. Some key points around that, we currently fund one head coach and two assistant coaches on that, but we do have three teams: one at the varsity level, a JV level, and a freshman level. We currently have about 60 to 65 boys we've been averaging for the past six years, but the biggest concern why I'm asking for this growth, asking for this request, is really the growth of the sport. Growth of the sport, not only at the youth level, but if you've noticed those on ESPN, we just got announced this week that lacrosse will be in the U.S. Olympics. It's a sport that is dramatically growing. Give you a better sense of it, if you look at the class, the freshman class that's coming in, it's probably the largest class of freshman players on the boy side that you've seen ever. We usually average between 12 to 16 boys. You're looking at 28 to 30 freshman boys that are going to be coming to play. On top of that, I also very active in the youth program side. Right now, between fifth and eighth grade, you have 110 players that are going to be coming through the program. Right now, you're only around 60, 65 players that are coming through. So the overall growth within that sport is dramatically going to show up here in the next four years. My second request that I just wanted to bring to your attention is really just an equipment request. Every year, we order lacrosse balls from the sports program, and with that shipping cost, that cost continues to grow, it's around $1,200 that we're looking to take in consideration. So in summary, one additional growth, one additional coach, just based on the growth, the popularity of the support, and the safety of the kids. And the second is just from an equipment standpoint to take in consideration. But overall, as a booster mind, as the president of the booster club, we'll continue to fundraise. We'll continue to work with our parents to raise money, but as mentioned earlier, the overall macro environment coming out of COVID has been very challenging to raise that money to go through. But overall, thank you again for your support.
Hi, good evening. Ken Alberti, 100 Trailwood Drive. I'm here, as many others, to talk about a few topics related to Guilford High School Athletics. I've been involved at the youth level to the high school level for the past eight or nine years. And a couple things, the coaching stipends, I was here last year, I think I was a little late in the cycle to help advocate, but the board did respond to our requests and did add some of those coaching stipends back. And I'm kind of talking athletics in general. From a safety perspective, from a growing program perspective, the burden of assistant coaches to safely staff athletics teams shouldn't fall to the parents. As you can hear, we're already fundraising for lots of things: equipment, apparel, those kind of things that really make the program special. But the coaching piece, I feel strongly that that shouldn't fall to parents. And I know there are a lot of requests for stipends. I would just ask the board to continue to consider funding those requests as they come through. I know I've been involved in the football side, lacrosse side. Each program has been funding anywhere from one to two coaching stipends, but I know other sports are looking for the same. So I would just ask the board to continue, as you have, and we're grateful for, considering funding those additional stipends so we can safely staff those teams. I would also like to just advocate for the cheer program. I'm the current president of the Guilford Youth Football and Cheer Program, and seeing that program grow, when I first got involved eight years ago, there, I think there were eight cheerleaders. They have, as you heard earlier, over 70 now from the youth through the high school, which is really incredible. It's been a lot of hard work and effort from Coach Alicia and a bunch of folks who've been really strong advocates for that program. So I'd love to see that happen. It's great to see the girls out on Friday night. It would be great to see them at the basketball gym for games, and it's a really great program. The girls are doing a nice job. The other thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention, again, related to athletics, and I'm not sure all folks are aware of, but there's a practice in Guilford to charge our students to attend athletic contests, both high school students and our youth students. And it just, I know that doesn't happen everywhere. I know it happens in some places. To me, it seems counter to what we're trying to build. You know, as you all might agree, I hope you would agree, our athletic fields are our largest classrooms in the district, right? Whether it's a court or a field, and peers are out there. Kids want to come and support their friends, their teammates. They want to be part of the community. Charging, you know, a high school student to come support their classmate seems odd. And charging a 10-year-old to come watch, you know, a game of something, they might be that kid one day, and they're excited to be here, seems odd, that $3 charge. I'm not sure the reason for it. I've never really gotten a straight answer from the athletic department when I've asked that question, so I just want to bring it to your attention. I'm not sure where that money goes, what it supports, if it's relied upon to offset the athletic budget. To me, that seems there's a problem with the athletic budget. If we're relying on student ticket fees to offset costs of whether it's travel or equipment or otherwise, that seems kind of short-sighted. And again, putting that burden on our students, which obviously goes to our parents, to attend athletic contests regardless of the sport, seems a little counter to what we're trying to build. I feel the same way about parents having to pay $5 to watch their child play a high school sport, but I can table that one, and really, I'd love to, I'd love for you to consider, or maybe ask that question if you don't know the answer, where those funds go, what they're supporting. If it's being, again, if it's, if we're using that to offset athletic budget, to me, the athletic budget needs to be adjusted. So thank you all for your time serving on the board, and it's a lot of time and effort. You're helping to create wonderful public school systems, and athletics are a huge part of that, as you all know. So many students are involved in one way or the other, and it's great to see the growth of all the sports that have been talking tonight. And I think, as you've seen over time, that's why people are here. They're here talking about athletics, because it's a really important part of that student experience and that school experience. So thank you for your time and appreciate your consideration.
Good evening. Good to see everybody again. I want to just start with a lot of sentiment of Ken Alberti and Chris Ward on thanking you guys for the investment that you've made in athletics over the last three years. I've been attending these budget meetings for probably the last 10 years. I remember when we were in the old Guilford library, kind of doing this similar vein. And really, within the last three years, the support that the board and administration has provided to athletics, as Chris said, has been substantial and palpable from families and from athletes. I say the investments are paying off because of students' athletics experiences, they're developing confidence, self-efficacy, a sense of purpose, a sense of identity. I look back to my own experience, and a lot of my youth and high school sport experience and high school sport experience helps you develop that sense of purpose, and you look back on a lot of those experiences now and the person that you've become, and you're very grateful for it. That's why when Ken says that the biggest learning classroom is out on the athletic field or the court, it really resonates with me. Some of the investments that you guys have made, I sat in the corner embarrassed myself and clapped when we said that we had 15 cheerleaders. And everybody's probably wondering, is he clapping sarcastically or is he serious? It's the most genuine thing, because two weeks ago, I watched in the dusk as they're down on the lower material field, 15 of them, and I've been at these budget meetings when Mrs. Alicia was advocating for a cheerleading program. That cheerleading program has been reignited, thanks to the support of you guys. The swimmers within the last couple of years. I started advocating for that, because my Guilford, my daughter who was graduated here was paying $500 in a booster fee, and it just didn't seem right as a young lady talks about crew. That's a big expense for families, that my personal upbringing dictated to me that that should be a board's responsibility to cover those costs. When Booster Club is covering coaching, transportation, equipment, it just doesn't seem right to me that it's dependent upon the Booster Board. And let's be honest with the Booster funding. My guess is, and I, Chris would have better numbers for me, but fundraisers cover probably 40% of it, 50% of it. The other 50% that seems like a generous donation to the board is coming out of parents' pockets and essentially a pay-per-pay fee. So the swimmers feel supported because of that. The divers, where there wasn't a diving coach, now feels much safer. And I know, I know that young lady's parents and the other divers feel much better that there is someone there supervising them. Cross-country and tennis athletes, those athletes and coaches feel heard. They feel valued because of the investment that you've made. The hockey families, as we mentioned before, they feel a heck of a lot stressed, a lot less stressed. Thirteen fundraisers, for a lack of other terms, they were a slave to fundraising and what they have done. Thank you for what you guys have made. I find what happened with hockey over the course of 20 years probably analogous to what has happened in the athletic department. For whatever reason, athletics, I'm assuming, was somewhat ignored, or Booster Clubs or coaches just, oh, we'll do it. We'll ask the families to do it. And it's gotten out of balance. It's gotten out of whack. So I'm going to ask for one more request that Guilford is not covering well. I'm out of time. You want me to come up, or you, again, or you want me to keep rolling?
Make it quick.
Okay. The weight room that we have down here, it's being supported by volunteer coaches. Outside of their regular season, they're giving up their own personal time, their family time, to be in that weight room, to improve those kids' lives, to give them that sense of purpose, self-efficacy. I'm getting stronger. There's something with a weight room that, when all of a sudden your physique changes, your confidence changes. It does something to you. Anyone who works out knows what I'm talking about with that. Guilford doesn't pay anyone to staff that weight room. To me, that's a safety risk number one, that you're possibly having coaches that know specific sports but don't know weightlifting technique or programming in there. And it's second inequity concern, the bottom line is, it's the male athletes that are in that weight room. Female athletes don't have the opportunity for whatever, this isn't a critique, but it seems like most female sports aren't getting the opportunities to lift weight. It's industry standard for the last 25 years in every surrounding, I can't say every, the two high schools that I know, our neighbors to the east, did I get, our neighbors to the west, Branford, have had a coach there for 25 years, and our neighbors to the west have a stipend. So what I'm proposing with the weight room would be do something like an athletic trainer. Go to a legit strength and conditioning coach, similar to the athletic trainer, where it is not a coach that does it, and hire somebody. I would approximate that at a cost of $20,000 a year to fund those distinct seasons, your, obviously, fall, winter, spring, spring, summer. I'm getting the nod to hurry this up, so I will move along. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? I do actually have a couple clarifying points, because I did, when I was going through the list of dates, I don't know if you caught this, but my dates were off a little bit. I just want, the important dates that I want to make sure everybody knows, I was off by a day. Our public hearings regarding the budget is January 22nd and January 23rd. So just making sure everybody is aware of those important dates. Thank you. God bless you. I want to hand it over to you, Dr. Freeman, if you have any comments before we wrap it up.
I'll just close with where you started. I appreciate everybody who came out tonight. It was wonderful to have a full room and to have this much involvement this early in the process. I'm looking forward to a really engaging budget process this year. Thank you.
It is a long process. It's, and we're asking everybody to, you know, stay engaged, and we are readily available, should you need to contact us. We will be discussing the budget at nearly every meeting between now and April. So really, if there are any questions, if there are any concerns, comments, whatever it might be, you know how to reach us. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.